This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council, April 4th, 6:30 PM. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel, I'll be presiding. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order, and would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone. Okay, the meeting has been called to order, and at this time, I would like to call Jamie Whiteley, ambulance director, up, along with Brent Dockett, she has a presentation to make. Would you want to use this corner with the flag here, please? And Kurt, Kurt, you'll have to direct him around where you want him.
Oh, everybody's scattered.
Just making her own.
Oh my gosh, I'll, I'll make this very short and sweet. I did have the opportunity to know Brent for very long, but in the short time that I did, he is a wonderful, wonderful professional EMT. And one of the things that I was kind of heartbroken this last year is your recent retirement from the ambulance service. And we did some digging, and 24 years of service. And I thought that was just falling short of amazing. So, on behalf of the Arlington Ambulance, the city of Arlington, we'd like to present you with this beautiful plaque, identifying the 24 years of continued service for the ambulance service. And it just says here, "For 24 years of dedicated service to the Arlington area ambulance." No, I think there's good.
Kurt's gotta do a few pictures, eh?
Thank you, Brent, that's pretty amazing.
Yes, absolutely. Scut, cuddly.
Oh, you know what? I'd have to have you take your jacket off, because I'm getting that.
The jacket is good.
Sorry about that. Yep. Awesome, here we go.
Do I have glare in my glasses? I tried to lower my chin. Starry eyes. Bright red ones.
Oh, looks good.
Good, alright.
Thank you.
Brent, congratulations.
They haven't come yet. Just making sure he's not like a little.
I used to work in carpentry crew with him forty years ago, with Brent. Brent and I, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. Back a long ways, and then I don't see him much anymore.
No, that was cool.
That was good. Alright, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Councilmember Meyer.
Here.
All members are present. Also at the table with me, on my left, is City Administrator Newsom, on my right, City Attorney Arnison. With that taken care of, are there any changes in the agenda, or any additions?
I have one addition to the agenda. Under number nine, the Public Works Department report, I would like to add approving, approving or denying the chip sealing bid from Pearson Brothers, in the amount of $67,730.40. And the information is on, was emailed out earlier, and it's in front of you with the two bids.
Alright, any other changes to the agenda? If not, motion is in order to approve the agenda. Councilmember Batchor moved to approve the agenda with the addition, second by Councilmember Morgan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, item number five. Consent agenda this evening consists of the following. A, approval of the bills. Item B, approval of March 21st, 2022, City Council workshop minutes. Item C, March 21st, 2022, City Council minutes. Item D, approve hiring of Sarah Fadness, or is it Fadness? Fadness? Fadness, I'm sorry. Fadness as EMT with the Arlington Area Ambulance. And item E, approve employee relations committee recommendations to appoint James Klingelhutz as Training Officer through December 31st, 2022, and Tom Pumplun to Second Assistant Chief through December 31st of 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Meyer, to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item six, addressing the council, is there anyone present here this evening that would wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications.
There are several things in your packet under communications, the MMPA Board Summary from March. There's going to be a career fair at Sibley East.
Would you like one of those, please?
Yeah.
Oh. I can, I can take off on it. Item H, tri-county solid waste recycling information. Arlington Citywide Cleanup Day will also be on June 22nd, to coincide with that. Item I, media comm notice regarding affordable connectivity program. This is a federal program that's put out to help some folks with special needs to indeed still be, still be able to take advantage of the internet service. Any questions on the communications? Okay, move on to item nine, Public Works Department, Mr. Wickworth. Good evening, Kirby.
Evening, Council.
Make sure that, make sure that's on.
Yep, should be on.
There you go, it is.
Okay. Alright, monthly update for March, I guess. So, snow melted. We had quite a few ice over catch basins. We had to spend time chipping open, opening up. Nothing was plugged up under the, under the grate itself, except for one on the end of Westbrook Street, County Road 9. That one was packed full of gravel and froze, so we, we were able to jet through that, actually, and open that up within about an hour. I think I still probably have to get a vac truck here to vac that out, there was a lot of gravel in there yet. It's okay, I gotta get one in anyways, and do a couple of routine things that need to be vaced anyways.
Any idea why, why in that spot the gravel was?
I think, well. Not really, other than maybe, you know, the shoulder there on County Road 9. If it rains heavy, a lot of gravel, I think, from the shoulder probably comes down.
Sure.
In traffic. Uh, in the past, we've used, American Environmental has done it. Gosh, I've only, I've only actually ordered, had that done a couple times, and they've, they've done it both times. Yeah, seems like it. Who's that?
So, the city of Lee Sewer bought one. When I step around once in a while, I don't know if, if we could maybe basically get them to come over and do it.
Okay.
Depending on how far away.
I could check into it. Yeah, because I mean, it's, no matter who you get, it's usually not cheap.
Yeah.
Alright, that's good to know. Uh, yeah, anyways, I guess we were busy for a few days with that. We had some nicer, warmer days, we were actually able to get out. Potholes were dry enough to blow out and get some potholes filled with the cold patch. Still need quite a few holes to be patched, waiting on the weather to cooperate. It's kind of been a bad spring for our outdoor work. Other than that, working on bids for tree work and street work. The streets, now, I'll just keep this general for now, but our streets, to me, I've, I've got quite a few concerns of base failure underneath the asphalt. There's a lot of soft sinking spots, spider webbing, alligator cracking. I made a map of what I consider good streets. Your fair streets and your poor streets. But I, I do think we, at that point, we gotta consider some engineer help in a five to 10-year plan, maybe for either overlay in some areas, or maybe even resurfacing a stretch here and there, I don't know. I, I just know that I have concerns, I've been taking phone calls from some people. It's, and this, this time of year, they always look worse, it's soft, everything's wet. We haven't really seen them for six months. But they're, we're getting to that point, I think, if we don't do some, some planning, it's, we're gonna have some really poor streets.
Something I was gonna bring up, you know, I wonder if we could look at the, what we spent on like snow removal, because I mean, we didn't have too many events, and maybe we have some money that would have been set aside that we could, if we do a quick priority, maybe we could fix a couple of soft spots or something.
I, yeah, I would love to, I'd love to, there's about 10 grand left. We used about four fifths of our snow, actually. I know we didn't have a lot of big emergency-type events, we had a lot of one-inchers, 1.25 inches. I hate to leave those get packed down, so I would, a few of them, we did grade. Downtown, we'd windrow and then blow them out. I just hate, I hate to leave that, so, so we did use up, yeah, right. Yeah, and that has to be used for November, December, too, possibly, but.
That's true.
You know, that's for this year.
Later this year.
Yeah.
You know, if we're willing to go in the negative, I'm fine with using that, too, but. I don't know how far that'll get us, I mean, it's, the prices are up so much, it's crazy this year.
I know, just in walking around, too, I see some streets that they're broke up into little, probably that piece of, yeah, just.
Yeah, alligator crack.
Yeah, similar to what the, what the cemetery roads looked like before we resurfaced.
It's usually a sign of your, your base failing.
Is it?
Yeah, getting soft.
I mean, that's more than you can fix with a, with anything topical.
You know, there's something that you can have done, that's infrared patching, which I did for the first time last year on some of our streets that are getting real bad, where we're gonna do reconstrux, but we, we're kind of holding off.
Yeah.
Just trying to keep them together until we can do those. But, uh, they, they, they can get to the point where you can't do a whole lot with them.
Yeah.
You know? But, yeah, I mean, Dave, your expertise, you could, you could surely use some of that, too, when we want to. Me, Amy, you, meet up with the engineer, and I think we'd need his help.
Yeah, good idea, use the resources we have, yeah.
Yeah, this is kind of the good time of the year to see that stuff, but. Anyways.
Okay, so you've got some bids on tree removal.
Yeah, would you like to just, you want to do that now? Okay.
Yep, unless you have some other things to report on.
Yeah, it's just work stuff.
It looks like, in both cases, the LNT comes in less. I mean, we're, we're not to exceed 5,000 on everything here.
Right.
So, their hourly rate is less. You've, you've been using LNT for a number of years.
LNE, yeah, should be LNE, but yeah.
LNE?
They do a exceptional job. I thought that price was high at first, I was kind of surprised, but I talked to him, he said he'd be using four people. And they, they move. They should be, we should be able to get quite a bit done for that price. I mean, I've seen his crew take down big trees in four or five hours. Just for a relative idea, but. Yeah, I mean.
They do not do, they don't do any stump removal, alright?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, they do?
Uh, that's not included in this.
Okay, okay.
For now.
Can be taken care of later.
Yeah, I thought so. It's hard to know what you got in a stump sometimes, if there's a lot of roots and things like that. He tries to, he does a better job than anybody I've seen cutting them as low as he can, so he got less stump luck, but.
Looking for a motion for the LNE?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, sorry. Okay, so this would be for the first one I take it, or do we need separate motions on? Yeah, okay, so this would be the first one to approve the bid to remove trees from power lines, LNE tree service. 225 an hour, not to exceed $5,000, and they came in with a low bid. So, and who made the motion, please? And you? Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchor, to approve the bid from LNE tree service for the remove trees from power lines, and not to exceed $5,000. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carried. Next one, then, is similar, not similar, but remove trees from the boulevards, boulevard trees from LNE, also, at, again, a lower rate.
Do you have a number on how many boulevard trees they're gonna remove? It's just whatever's dead?
It's not even dead, I think it's, well, some might be dead. It's our ash bor, um, deal. It's gonna have to be kind of as we go along.
Are you gonna concentrate on just taking out ash trees this year?
Yeah, well, for our grant, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't think we'll have much left over for much else.
Okay.
Unless we can do it ourselves. What was the original question, sorry?
How many?
How many, yeah.
I haven't, I have not yet met with. It's gonna have to meet.
5,000, is it 10,000?
Well, the limit, the bid, the grant was 44,000, but that's with stumps and replacement of trees.
The grant was 26, was that?
The grant was 26.
Plus an extra 15 was in the budget, I believe, in addition to that.
15.
We also have to pay the guy, what was it, 6,000?
Oh, the arborist?
Yeah, I mean, all that has to be tallied up for us to truly know. I told Amy, this is, I don't, I mean, we had, we don't have a plan together yet with the management guy. He's supposed to come to town and meet with me.
When does he come?
From Davy Corp, or whatever it is. He told me he was gonna call me this week.
I want to meet him, too.
Okay.
So, this work will be done based on his recommendations, then, or, or input, at least?
Yeah, he wants to get an idea for the plan of what areas need concentration.
Would he go around and mark the tree, then, that would allow?
He leaves, he kind of leaves it up to the, the city, I mean, us.
But you would go with him?
Yeah, I'll go around with him.
I mean, we have no. Like, again, is it 5,000, 10,000, 100,000?
It's 26,000. I mean, we'll have to keep track of it as it goes.
Yeah.
So, would you feel more comfortable having it in not to exceed 26,000 in there?
Yeah, just doing math on the other stuff, there's 5,000.
Right, so that is.
Because we have to buy trees.
Yeah, we have to buy some trees, yeah.
I know, no doubt, there's some math to be done, but that's, I mean, that's after, if we can get this.
I think you're pretty aware of what, what the total amount is, I don't think we need to.
We're not gonna know how much stumping is yet.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a kind of go along.
It's sort of a moving target.
Yeah, that's how all the other cities are doing it, too. Check of Newall, North Mankato.
Yep.
I mean, the, the other cities that have grants like that, same grant, we'll.
Okay, so we're designating an LNE tree service to remove boulevard trees at a rate of $250 an hour. Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Thomas, to approve the bid from LNE tree service to remove boulevard trees at a rate of $250 an hour. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item 10, March ambulance report.
You forgot the addition.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the one, chip sealing. Got it, got a chip sealing, and that is here. Boy, wow. I got it. Yeah. Approved chip sealing from Pearson. Any description on that project, or any background that you wanted to share with the council?
Um, yeah, I think you guys emailed the, the map.
Yep.
And the list of streets. Kind of concentrating East Adams, that, the entire stretch of East Adams, and then the adjacent roads up to Main Street, and then the, yeah, First Ave past Four Seasons Park, Main Street. Kind of had to really cut it down this year. Usually, we can do almost double for this amount, this price.
So, any of the soft spots that are on these roads, would there be areas into a board to those areas? Or do something different, or?
Well, I think we're okay to chip yet. I, I have to get bids still for the maintenance work due before the.
Should be before.
Yeah, I mean, that's in the works, that's coming yet. This is such a big price, and I wanted to nail it right away, before it goes up, but. These streets, I think, are worthy yet to at least get us by for a while. And a lot of, you know, the chip seal, those chips, will fill in a lot of cracks, and things like that. And help for a while, hopefully, a few years.
You're gonna have all these same streets crack-filled?
Yep, crack-filled, there could be some gap mastic, there's probably some curb work. Push some puddles around with some patches.
I'll make a motion to Pearson.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Meyer, to approve the chip sealing bid from Pearson Brothers, in the amount of $67,730.40. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, anything else for Kirby? Kirby, you got her all taken care of, ready to go? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, March ambulance report, Jamie.
Thanks, Kirby.
Yep, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Just a few things here. In regards to the individual that was on our consent agenda, I just wanted to kind of give you a background on Sarah. She has worked with the rural ambulance service. She's actually a first-year paramedic student down at South Central Technical College. So, she's got experience on the trucks, we're kind of excited to have her join our team. So, she seems pretty eager to work. Just a couple of things, on March 26th, I was invited to the Green Isle Fire Department banquet. When I was there, I was presented on behalf of Arlington Ambulance, bless you.
Bless you.
An award, which is really, really, really cool. And they just recognize each year organizations that continuously support the Green Isle Fire Department. So, I was able to accept an award on the ambulance's behalf. That was really nice to think of us. And then, on March 29th, I did a first aid review, a kind of a, I can't say a first aid class. I had to say a first aid review class, at a group home down here on Chestnut. I sat with their staff and went through just basic first aid skills with them, and talked about what to anticipate, especially if there's a medical or traumatic emergency at that facility, and what to kind of anticipate when the ambulance gets there. So, that was just kind of a nice, nice training for them. Quick update on the diesel truck, the last time I spoke, the diesel was going in. She came back. Finally. Basically, it was an issue with the EGR valve, and the turbo was actually stuck closed. For lack of better terms, it was really plugged up, and that's why we had issues with acceleration and such. So, they were able to remedy that issue. Just kind of touch base, we're just tightening up some loose ends in regards to the mock crash that we're gonna be putting together in May. We've been working with Gaylord Fire and Ambulance, too, just kind of one big collaboration. I think we've invited Green Isle Fire to be included in the, on this exercise, as well as Arlington Fire. So, it's, it's gonna be a good time. I think this is gonna be a really good exercise for Sibley East.
And where does that take place?
Over by the football field, there's the open area. So, we have kind of a limited timeframe, so to speak, in regards to doing the mock crash, because they're going to do an impact speaker afterwards. So, it's just, it's gotta be quick, but effective, so we can get the students back to the class for that impact speaker. Just a quick update in regards for calls of service. We are now up to 150 calls for service for the ambulance. And then, also, too, just kind of an update, I started doing team member, crew member evaluations, and this is gonna go in conjunction with the surveys that we're sending out to the patients, and kind of work towards our annual employee reviews, that'll be due in October. So, be jumping on the truck, doing some good evaluations, some good constructive criticism, and, and at-a-boys and at-a-girls, so, so I'll be hanging out with them quite a bit. And then, an update on our students, Aubrey and Piper, they have passed the Allied Medical Training Program. And so, they've also passed their practical skills, so now they can sit for the NRT written. So, they'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks, so think about them. Lots of, lots of wishes to them, as well as Sam. Sammy is gonna be sitting for the written again, as well. So, here's hoping, fingers crossed, this is good. Other than that, yeah, that's all I really have. You guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Item 11, February People's Service Report. Is there any, anything that anyone has on that? Pretty, just a typical month, I would say. I noticed the U of M students were there to collect wastewater samples for research of antibody drug-resistant genes in the human body. Interesting concept, what they're finding out from wastewater. Anything on the People's Service Report? Alright, we will move then on to Resolution 28-22. Resolution adopting the City of Arlington's rules governing the interconnection of cogeneration in small power production facilities, I'm sure everyone has read that.
If you did, I'd put two on that, it's a lot of stuff to read.
I did print out the, I did print out the cover, just for my own reference, but, that's as far as I go. Any, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna summarize it just real short and sweet. It's just updating what we passed about a couple of years ago. I talked to a gentleman at the MMPA, I do believe. Yes, that. The attorney there, he present, he gave me all this stuff, and he recommended that we need to update it, and here we are, gave me all the applications and everything, which is a lot. And I have a few, the reason for this is, I have a few people that are interested in putting solar panels in, so, hence, updating it.
Okay, okay. Alright, we need to pass a resolution adopting this.
I'll introduce Resolution 28-2022, adopting the City of Arlington rules governing the interconnection of cogeneration and small power production.
Okay.
I'll second.
Resolution 28-2022 was introduced by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Thomas. You heard the title of it. You heard the title of it, and I'm not gonna repeat it. Are there any questions? Is there any, is there any discussion? Hearing none, a vote by roll call. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-two, a resolution amending mayoral appointments and committees. Uh, this one is, uh, simply adding Councilmember Meyer to the, fill one of the vacant spots on planning and zoning. Uh, so there is still one vacant spot open for your information, and if you find anyone out there you think is, uh, interested in filling that, that could be filled at any time, but the only change from the last time we dealt with this is, uh, adding the name of Councilmember Meyer to the planning and zoning.
Um, I, I would like to add that with some of these, the streets discussion that we had, sidewalk discussion, that's probably not being had, electrical discussion, that's probably not being had. Um, we, we did away with a lot of the committees that we used to have, as far as just council committees. Um, not just those there, so it's not really pertinent to this, but later on, maybe I'd like to bring up adding some of those back on and into the...
Okay.
Electric, made it sound.
Uh, also, just to sidebar with the sidewalks, based on our sidewalk policy, which you all...
And that he's been working on.
Yeah, well, from what you approved and from what I edited, it's me and Kirby, pretty much, we create, I create a map of the sidewalks that need to be dealt with that are fair, poor, and decent condition. Me and Kirby then sit down, determine what we need to do, and then I bring it to council. That's pretty much how that process works, right now, based on our policy.
I think what you're saying is, go back to some of the committees that we had, that we did away with, okay, which is something...
We can talk about it later, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I just had a point at that point here, but I'll make a motion to approve. Or introduce...
Introduce this one?
Twenty-nine, twenty-two, amending the appointments.
Second.
I think it was you, wasn't it, Sharpie?
Yes.
Yes, all right. Um, Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty-two, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Sharpie. And that is a resolution with the one change of adding, uh, Councilmember Meyer to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor, or I should say, we'll do a vote by roll call. Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
I do.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. All right, there is no unfinished business. Move on to the, uh, prove and deny peddler's permit for Four Bros Casino Latina Food Truck, April through December, at the downtown parking lot. Are they either part, I mean, what parking lot are they? The one across from Bakery? Okay, by the side. Yeah, has it been? It is the same, okay.
They don't get a mess.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchor to approve, uh, the peddler's permit for Four Bros Casino, Cachina Casino Latina Food Truck, uh, April through December twenty-two, downtown parking lot. Further discussion?
Has anybody ever complained about these food trucks or restaurants, no?
No, not so far. Not, not to the council, they haven't. Publicly, under their breath, they...
I have nothing against it, I just want...
I think there's people that drive from our town to come and...
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
And at that point, they might get gas, and stop in for a movie, or...
No, I just, no objection to it, I was just wondering if anybody, it's like, wow.
And if you notice on the application, it includes Arledazzle, so they do come for Arledazzle, which is a good thing.
Which, especially just last year, we could use four more, too.
I don't think I called a motion yet, did I? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Motion carried. Okay, item sixteen, update from Attorney Arnison on the four nineteen West Main Street. Man, that sounds loud.
We can hear you.
It's good, I can hear you.
We can hear you.
For the, uh, uh, people who have been here a while, uh, this was Beanie's Main Inn, and for a number of years, it was the, uh, Templo Marinatha, a Hispanic church. Uh, some time ago, they started experiencing roof leaks, and, uh, they attempted a repair. I think it was a homemade repair job, uh, and it wasn't adequate, so of course, with the roof leaking over a long period of time, the interior deteriorated dramatically. And our building inspector, uh, did a full review, uh, last summer, and determined that the building, uh, was in need of either major repair or demolition. And, uh, we've had occasional discussions with the, uh, congregation. Um, didn't seem to be anything happening. I did meet with them last fall, and they indicated that, uh, they couldn't really afford to fix it. Um, and there was apparently some disagreement in the congregation about, uh, the fate of the building. Um, uh, in any case, with no further activity, uh, we then presented them, uh, uh, this last month with the, uh, uh, Building Inspector's Report, and indicated that we were gonna go forward with condemnation of the building. Um, and, uh, in response to that, uh, uh, they met with the city administrator and myself last week with a young man out of the cities who apparently is a minister, and has a couple of other, uh, church sites. And, um, their proposal was to sell the building to him, and, uh, that he would then remodel it. Uh, we did present him with a copy of the, uh, Building Inspector's Report, so he knows what he's undertaking. Um, and also indicated that we weren't going to wait, uh, much longer for some action on the building. Um, also, uh, I think, made it clear to him that, uh, homemade repairs were not going to be allowed. Um, uh, uh, proper building, uh, permit procedures had to be followed. Uh, licensed contractors employed to, uh, do the, uh, work that requires licensed contractors. Uh, and that we wanted, uh, uh, major, uh, improvement to the property this summer. So, uh, just wanted to update the council on that, and, uh, um, this individual was going to supposedly keep in touch with Amy. Uh, uh, we're gonna have, uh, the Building Inspector also keep an eye on the property, uh, to be able to report back to us on progress, and also, if there's any indication that they're conducting work without permit, which has occurred in the past. Um, and, uh, hopefully, they will, uh, get the building back into shape so that it's usable again. Uh, the alternative, which we were about to embark on, was to, uh, serve them with a, uh, condemnation notice and order for demolition within thirty days. And if they don't, uh, if a building owner doesn't respond to that, uh, then we have to file for a court order, uh, which is normally issued within another ten days, uh, allowing the city to conduct the demolition. Um, uh, once the demolition is completed, the city can charge the property owner for the cost. And if it's not paid, then, uh, the levy can be put on the lot itself. And then typically, a year later, uh, if that levy is not paid, then the county forecloses on it, uh, for unpaid taxes. And, uh, typically, they turn around and offer it to the city for the, uh, you know, the amount of the demolition charge. Um, based on the location, and a review with the county auditor of the value of the lot, uh, would be about a wash. That's a rough guess, uh, as to the cost of demolition and the value of the vacant lot that would then be created. But, uh, again, it's a long, convoluted process, so, um, we did, uh, tell the church people that, uh, we're not interested in creating a vacant lot, but, uh, we do require action. And, uh, if it isn't repaired, uh, this summer, then I guess we will then proceed with the condemnation. So, questions?
Do they have a timeframe, or?
That's what I pushed for, when we met. I said sooner rather than later, and I kinda wanted it done now, and I pushed for the summer.
Okay.
So that if we don't see any activity going on there by September first, they probably can suspect that not much is gonna happen.
So we're waiting till September first?
Well, I'm just throwing that out as an idea. We can wait till June first, I guess, but that leaves two months for them to, to start the process of refurbishing the building.
And I think the, uh, message that we sent to them was that we wanted some activity pretty soon. Um, and, uh, uh, if they don't pull building permits, uh, I'd say within the next month, um, we'll be in touch with them.
Okay, that's, uh, I think we need to keep on it, for sure.
So, and is it a hazard? I mean, is a hazard in this town?
Well, the Building Inspector has indicated it cannot be occupied, and they're aware of that. And we don't have any evidence that they've used it lately. Um, uh, and, uh, ultimately, yes, it could be a, a hazard, a, a collapse hazard.
Right.
Yes.
Isn't the front and the back, because, you know, one of those, that was an addition on the back of that, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Throughout the whole building.
The whole thing.
Throughout the whole building. There's some serious, uh, black mold issues throughout the whole building.
Yeah, they got water in there.
Nine yards, is what I would say.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm surprised that anybody's interested in fixing it up, but...
Well, and what our concern is that, um, you know, there's some interest now, but once he gets into it, he may decide that it's more of a project that he wants to handle. I shouldn't say him, as, I had the impression from earlier discussions that, uh, he's a member of a larger church group. And so, uh, that larger church group presumably has some resources that they can provide him with.
Okay. See what happens.
Well, if nothing else, if this, if we can't fix this, then it would be nice if they could find another space in, in town. I mean, we have a pretty large population.
They are meeting in our church right now?
Oh, they are.
Mm-hmm, maybe Sunday afternoon.
Can, can I ask how this came about? Because there's, you know, I hear stories of another building in town that's potentially ruled that needs to be condemned, and whether maybe that's not true, the old, uh, the one the roof got ripped off of, is that not the case?
Oh, the across from Arlington House? Uh, Chef Craig's, Chef Craig's building, across from the south of the main street.
I'm just trying to make sure apples and apples, we're, we're treating everybody equally. If, if that building was condemned, as though I've heard, and I, that's, maybe that's, that's hearsay, I don't have any...
I don't think so.
Just, just getting on that, because on plan wise, I have taken, given this situation has happened, I have been going around town, figuring out which areas need to be condemned and stuff, just for obviously fairness sake. And for us particularly, in order to revitalize our central business district and our town, figuring out which buildings are decrepit, are decrepit and possibly might need to be condemned. I'm creating a list that I'm gonna, uh, send Darren, that when you get, obviously, he's busy, that we can do inspections on and assess from that.
And by no means do I wanna start tearing buildings down. I'd rather have them revitalized, but I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're treating people equally.
And I have been talking to people in town that have been, particularly for certain houses that we've been pushing to condemn, they have been buying and revitalizing, so I've been talking to people so we can avoid that situation, so we don't end up with a bunch of vacant lots. So I'm currently in the works. Planning wise, I'm in the works of trying to create a plan. Like at least a three, uh, two to three-year plan, that we can maybe figure out how to do that.
Does anyone know if Chef Craig is using that old building for storage or anything yet?
To my understanding, that place is vacant.
I do not see his trucks there at all, so...
I've been keeping an eye on it, that is not being used, as I've witnessed from what I've gathered. I could be wrong, I'm just...
He could have some equipment in there, I'm just wondering whether he frequently goes in or not.
I am, I, like I said, I'm gathering data. I'm gonna reach out to him, particularly on that building, and see what's going on.
And my understanding of that building is it's, uh, much better shape than, uh, the, uh, four nineteen West Main Street property we've been talking about. But I believe the east wall is starting to bow out, and that's the main concern.
Yeah, I'm surprised somebody hasn't blocked out for rental, or...
Okay, so we will, uh, sort of keep on top of that property and, uh, on Main Street, but Attorney Arnison. Okay, any other questions on that? All right, moving on to committee updates. Are there any?
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we, we did meet, Lexo Group did meet, uh...
Last week.
Last week, and we're really still in the process of gathering information. Yeah, so, so once we get all that information, we're gonna meet again here, when is? Next week. So then we're gonna, you know, see where we are with some of these contracts and the agreements that we have in place, and just sort of drill down, because, uh, with, with some of the research Howie has done, I mean, there's... Yeah, he's done a ton of work, so there's possibilities where we can broker better deals, but it's, we gotta find out what are our agreements and how long they are. And then we're, we're looking at also, uh, possibility using different contractors. You know, because a lot of times we're farming out stuff, you can get, like, some of the work that Howie did, Olivia actually hires two con, they go to a subcontractor and they hire, like, two bodies for the year. That they don't hire, they're subcontracting the labor out, but they're doing all the little to-do work, you know, replacing poles, doing all that work at a lot lower rate than, say, that we're contracting it for right now, because... And then we, we also think there's a, you know, in some cases, we're getting double billed. For instance, they were talking about this run by the railroad. Well, Howie said he went over there and both McLeod County and, uh, Minnesota Valley, both were there, like, to oversee what are we gonna do? And then, in, in, at the end game, it's gonna be contract, it's gonna be subcontracted out. We could just as well have done, you know, done that ourselves, and save the money, because now we're gonna be paying for project management for both groups. So we just need to get control of it, so we're not, that, that's some of the things we're looking at, is so we're not being, in some cases, double billed for work that we don't need. You know, we need to have one group, if they're gonna have someone doing our engineering, the one group should be doing it. We shouldn't be having both groups doing it, and things like that. But we're really, you know, you know, really in the infancy of this, so, I mean, we, so much information that you sent us this week, I'm still, you know, I tried to go through some of it today, it's just, like, some of those contracts are, you know...
Well...
Yeah, so we're, we're just getting in the need of it, but I think a lot of good things are gonna come. I like the group that was pulled together, um...
Who, yeah, who is on it?
Okay, so it's Howie, Howie's son, uh, People's Service.
Lee.
Lee, and then Br-
Brian.
Brian, yeah. And, and Brian's actually, uh, he does, he works for an outfit where they subcontract, doing all this work. So he's, he's actually, uh, got quite a bit of experience. And then that's the one nice thing is, you know, we can compare rates, what, what they're subcontracting out to other electrical outfits, and, and see, you know, at the end of the day, if we go that route, there'd be a huge savings. And then we're just looking at all the, the rates and the, that piece of it.
I think it's a good committee, because it's a group that has interest and experience.
Yeah, so it's, it, I mean, there's a lot of good discussion, it's just that we, there were a lot of things, more information that we all needed. Yeah, and I think you got quite a bit of it out to us, so we should have a good meeting coming up here.
Is Brian a local fellow?
Yes, yeah, he lives in town.
Okay.
What's his last name?
Maul.
Maul. Yeah, I think he lives, uh...
Is that the one you described to me one time, Phil? Lives, lives...
I described a lot of people.
Well, no, no. No, no, but I mean...
That sounds like a loaded question.
Yeah, you, you described where he lived, I should say, and it was right down near our house.
It's still a loaded question.
Yes, that's where I think- Yes, that's where I think he is.
The old Steen House, I think, is probably.
That, you know what, that sounds familiar, yeah, he.
Across the street from McCormick? From, uh.
Oh, from, uh, from, uh.
The brick house.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Across the street.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's where he is.
I can't confirm, but I do know for a fact he lives in town, because me and him had discussions about things previously. It wasn't.
But I, I think, I think, I think you're right, where, where you're guessing there.
Okay, I know he always has a plumbing and heating truck by his house or something, but.
Something to just keep in mind as we're doing that, is just thinking about the liability, ensuring that we have the proper people deciding, you know, what kind of work and whatnot.
They can only, trying to recommendation to council, council still will need to make.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not second guessing the committee at all, I think it's a great committee. I'm just ensuring that, you know, there's.
Well, we would still only contract, you know, we wouldn't try, you know, have employees, I guess.
If we're saying, well, we need to replace this with this spec, that would, that would, that would put the liability on the city versus having that, that engineering, that, that's, that's.
Well, that, that's, that's part of it, but we're looking at just general maintenance and, and things of that, that nature as well. That, and plus, if you're, if you're hiring a subcontracting group, I mean, the liabilities on their part.
They would have to show liability coverage and.
Yes, that, all that.
Be qualified to do what they're gonna be doing.
What I'm getting at is if we are saying, do this.
Well, the one example that we're using is they're gonna make a trench from point A to point B along side of railroad tracks. I mean, you, we could pay for engineering to say, yeah, put that trench from here to here, but it's, something like that is too basic. I mean, there's no reason that we'd want to engineer that.
John, just to piggyback off your saying to answer Joe's question, most of this work will require right-of-way permits. And I, based on our requirements, I require a certificate of liability for any type of that work. Obviously, we're not gonna charge them for it, because we're asking to do it. They definitely need to have their insurance, which is the certificate of liability. So, no matter what, we are protected, because they need to prove that in order to get proper approval from my end.
That was part of our discussion too, now that you bring that up, is why are we requiring right-of-way permits when they already have the right-of-way? And, and here's the deal, because the reason I bring this up is because we have to pay for the time they take to apply for that, fill out all the stuff, and yet, all that we're doing is replacing poles in existing right-of-way. So, I don't, I don't know why we do that. That was a discussion we had in the meeting as well, but.
It just reiterate that.
It costs us more money than what we get in permits.
Well, it's.
No, they don't pay nothing for the permit either, because we'd be paying it.
It's mainly, it's mainly for record and to show that they have liability insurance, just in case something happens. I can tell you from, I mean, big cities, you have to do this, and we should do it too, because you never know, they're putting that pole up, something happens, if they don't have insurance for it, we're liable for it. It's, that's, that's the nature of the beast.
But, well, in business, we just, we make them, give us the certificate of insurance. That's a little simpler than.
Well, I mean, we can always negotiate, I mean, to be honest with you, with the right-of-way permits, it's actually very straightforward, a same-game review, the moment they send to me, they give me everything I need, it takes them no more than.
Right, but Brian, you know, who does this work, he was one of the biggest guys that was going, why are we doing that?
I mean, and we can, that, that's for future discussion, let's not get into the weeds on that. That's for later discussion, that we can talk about at the committee.
There's a lot for this committee to work out.
Yes, there's, there's, there is a lot, there's a lot to go through.
Any other committee updates?
Personnel.
Oh, personnel.
Yeah, that was, um.
Fire department.
But we already voted.
We already voted on that, so.
Yeah, so we interviewed candidates for the second.
Assistant chief.
Assistant chief, and.
Training and safety.
Training.
Yep, yep, so.
Earlier in the meeting, we approved that, so.
Yep, we had good candidates, very, we had a hard time making up our mind on one of the positions and.
It was just those two then.
It was just those two, but there was, you know, and here we, here we've assigned.
I wasn't here either.
Here we signed scores and we were, we were, he was.
Well, I was debating, I, I was thinking about changing the one, and we would have been exactly tied.
Actly tied, so, I mean, they.
It was tough, I think it's, it's a good sign for the future with, with the.
They have some good young leadership coming up on that.
Being active.
Very much so, very much so. I went to the county library board, and boy, was that an education. It was a, somebody put me up. It was educational, it was, it was very educational, and I found out why nobody from our local library board wants to be on that one. It is a doozy. Anyhow, the end result is, well, the, the talk for the last few months were, was to somehow reorganize, and you know more about this than I do, and keep it as a county library system. In the end, a motion was made to, for all the cities to go separate again, break away from the county system and go independent. And that is going to be recommended to the county commissioners, I'm not sure if they had their workshop or not yet.
So, they passed it, then you're saying?
That passed, but now the commissioners will have to decide if they, each city will have to be approached. Are you willing to take, take on your library as a city?
And the funds, the funds that you get from Sibley County, like right now, it's a split, I think it's about sixty forty, the county pays about sixty, the city about forty, that won't change.
Yeah, that would stay.
I'm laughing at my voice, that won't change. It's, they're still gonna put in about sixty percent, it's just that the library director would be a city employee. Because there's a lot of confusion right now, the library directors themselves don't know who they should report to.
Yeah.
You know, I, they've come to me, and not just Arlington libraries.
Is it still a regional system? Is that still a regional system, or what is it?
All part of Travis de Sue from St. Peter. And we still would be, you know, but each city would then have to request from Travis de Sue to be included in their.
It was kinda clear with the folks that came to the meeting, this is.
What they wanted.
This is, this is avenue we're going, yeah.
So hopefully, that's, that the commissioners will be approved and work out.
I believe April sixteenth, the county commissioners will vote on it, if that's a Tuesday. Uh, John sent me an email about when it would be voting.
So, uh, anything else?
Yeah, I was gonna bring up reinstalling the committees, like, apparently, there's, there's an electrical committee now, which I didn't know, but that's cool, I like it. I mean, I don't know if I missed it somewhere along the way or whatever, that it was being formed, but.
So, so one of that meeting that you were at, the, like, the last council meeting, I think you enjoyed, you enjoyed it, but you missed it.
Well, there was one of them I was at, yeah, I think both of you.
It was, it was probably Howie brought up.
Howie brought it to the council.
So, yeah, I, I did miss one, so.
Yeah, that, that's when it was, I think it's everywhere now.
Right, so I didn't, I didn't hear about it from them to here either, so whatever, but I think it's a good thing. I mean, my point is, is that we used to have many committees that were split up, two council members and the mayor typically on these committees, and it was, you know, sidewalks, streets, electrical, just across the board, with different things that are going on, and I think we did away with them because.
Committee involvement was part of it.
The ambulance, now who?
Struggling with people to.
The ambulance, now who, where the information didn't get passed to the full council, that was also one of the concerns.
Yeah, so I, right, so I mean, I think in a lot of ways, it's, it's nice to have those little committees to do the groundwork, right? Like, you're, you're doing an electric, that's something that the whole council, that would take us along, have to filter through, to say, you know, that Kirby, you know, needing, you know, that support or whatever he needs from council members to be his voice when he's not here, when we're talking about different things, as well as the other facets of the city that were involved in.
As long as, like, those committees have representation from the community, instead of just, like, two council members.
That was probably the problem.
Like, I, I don't really care for those, because then it's like, it's, it's just two council members talking about it, and then, and then it comes to the council, and it's like, well, the committee is making this recommendation. I, I think with, like, this one sounds like we have some passionate people.
Yeah, there's some very passionate people, and I think, that's wonderful.
It's a good goal.
It's only gonna bring it upside.
And that's an ad hoc committee, just for this one purpose, get, you know, dig in and find out where we can improve the, the electrical service and costs.
Even look at, you know, long-term planning, you know, because there's older parts of this town and stuff that we need to be doing something with, and we, we have, we haven't been doing any long-term planning or maintenance, where you budget so much a year to do so much, and, but, I mean, that's gonna be a way to help you to that point, but.
Well, like I said, I think it's great, and I'm glad, and I'm very happy that there's people that are willing to be on the committee as well, that are outside of the council. Um, I, I'm hoping that there's other, other places to that need attention, that can get it, can get that attention, even if it is a couple of council members.
You know, at least show what that camera with that software was called, where it shows, what is it?
Diamond Maps.
Oh, Diamond Maps, yeah.
Yeah, where they have all the hydrants and everything mapped out, but we can do the same thing with electrical with that software.
And we're testing that out right now, for the city to have it. We could have unlimited access, including those volunteers to do the cemetery, thirty-eight dollars a month. It's the cheapest one I could find, so I signed us up for it.
So, I mean, I think a lot of good things.
And he's been playing with it, I gave, given Kirby access, I'll give Lisa access when she's ready for it, but.
No, I mean, that, that would really document it, with, you know, to get it really documented is a big thing as well.
It's huge.
I, I guess that's what I thought on it, is that I would like to see those, those committees come back.
If you'd wanna bring back a proposal for which committees you'd like to see reinstated, and we can see, you know, see if it flies or not, that would be fine. Uh, Rec Center, do you wanna discuss that a little more tonight, where we go with Mr. Tully's ideas?
Form a little committee.
There's nothing wrong with that.
That's a starting point, I like that.
He would need to be on it and.
He would need to be on it and community members, not just, yeah.
It's not, I don't think it's a bad idea, I don't see it as a county thing if it's gonna be in Arlington, because the west end of the town will not agree.
No, I think if it's gonna be.
I was thinking the same thing, as we were having a discussion earlier, I was like.
It's gotta be centrally located, if it's gonna fly in the county.
Yeah, and even then, it's really hard with those other two counties, that, that west end is.
Sure, sure.
I think there's like, you know, you have, you know, we already have a business in town that has the workout thing, and then we have the workout at the school, also then to have another one, I mean, it can be, it can be death to one of them.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's a lot more, though, that come out of having a Y than just a workout place, you know, I think the organization for kids and, and even seniors. And it would, yeah, and it would have to be through an organization like that, or not.
Yes.
That's it, that we won't take an object.
No.
No, no, no.
The nice part is they run it, they run it.
If they were on it, there was no annual expenses for us. If it was a building that we don't have to spend five million on, right, then, then for me, I would be like, okay. But like, if we gotta go and spend five million and bond for it, and then pay the upkeep on it, I would say, heck no, let's let the private market do it, which is kinda what we have now, we have a workout place, you can pay to go there. We have the high school.
It'll be like a competition with a community education program that the school is running.
Exactly, so you sort of already have some of those things, maybe it's not the level it was what it used to, but we are a two thousand, two hundred population community, we're not St. Cloud, we're not Nacado.
He did bring up other communities that were our size, that have worked really well in.
But they may not have had those.
Because it brings people, because it brings people from other communities in too.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying, no, again, I just, I wouldn't support spending five million dollars.
Right, exactly.
Of our money.
When we're not probably gonna get it back, other than, yeah, watching traffic.
Where would we put it? Because I mean, we could redevelop this into that, but at the same time, because we really, in all honesty, planning wise, we have nowhere to put it, unless someone's willing to sell a piece of land in order to put it there.
You got twenty-two acres out there, don't you? I just wanted to beat Joe to it.
I wasn't even thinking. I read through, I read through what it sent to us.
I, I guess in my mind, it's, you just look at feasibility of it, but it's not something that, it's not an overnight thing, this is a five, ten-year term row, or anything that's ever gonna happen.
I don't know if it would take that long.
Five, it'd take that much, just with the funding.
Well, I don't know, not if, you have, not if you have a facility, and then they would come in and remodel or whatever.
How about if I reach out to Ed Tully, see if he can get some more people to start a committee? Because this really should be community-driven.
I think so, it has to be.
It shouldn't be like, I should not be pulling myself and a couple of you guys with Ed Tully and say, let's push this. No, it has to come from the community that is really pushing.
If you can find some more community members that wanna really head it up, that's the way it's gotta go.
There has to be that thing set that, you know, we're not committed to spending this much, like, this number. Like, that's not, that's like number one.
And I don't know, what do you think Commissioner Louis Hall is gonna, do you think he'll be bringing it up at any kind of workshop?
Probably gonna be pushing it towards gaylord with the building.
That's what it sounded like.
Oh, with the building they already have, yeah.
You can push it in the school there.
They were touring, I seen them out here, they were.
Looking at, because you, yeah.
So, well.
I mean, maybe.
When you think about Lissour, Lissour has one, right? They got rocket ball and basketball, and you can run across, run around there, and, you know, they're struggling, like, the, I, one of my employees is like, yeah, the, the monthly cost just went crazy, and they're like, we're not even gonna go to it anymore. COVID, they shut it down for how long, and they were paying all the expenses on it.
Is that a city?
That's a city we're on, okay, now, I'm not in the business, me personally, of saying the city's gonna go and do that, but if you can get someone to basically sponsor it like that, we already have a building, then I would say, you know.
Okay, all right, you talked to Mr. Tully and see where we can go, okay? We can always bring it up at a future meeting. Anything else under?
We have a community center committee that may totally disagree with that.
Yeah.
Might not want it here, yeah.
That's right. Any other things under open discussion?
There's an employee relations meeting Thursday at five-thirty, that's now on the reminder list.
Uh, Thursday at five-thirty?
Matt, Joe.
Okay. Motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Morgan, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye. Pose no, meeting adjourned seven thirty-eight.
I think the pictures came through.